Call the meeting to order, please stand for the flag salute.
Our limitations to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
The public notice of this meeting being so into the open public meeting act has been given in the following manner: by emailing written notice to the Courier Post and the Retrospect on January tenth, two thousand nineteen; by posting written notice on the official bulletin board at the municipal building on January tenth, two thousand nineteen; by filing written notice with the clerk of the borough Woodland on January tenth, two thousand nineteen.
Roll call.
Mr. Chuecky?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
President.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Early?
Here.
Mayor Fuentes?
Here.
At this point, we now start with committee report. We start out with Finance Councilman Fuentes.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
President, Council, President, and President, this will be my report for the borough Woodland of two thousand nineteen. April report. Borrow is five thousand nine hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. County, three thousand three hundred forty dollars and fifty cents. State, one thousand three hundred seventy dollars and ninety-two cents. Restitution, others, forty dollars. Total of ten thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. Tax payment count, two hundred and forty-one, which is a total of two hundred and forty thousand one hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. Need payments, thirty-five, which is six thousand and forty-eight dollars and eighty-three cents, total to six thousand one hundred thirty-three dollars and six cents. Animal license payments, thirty-six dollars and ten cents. That's a total of thirty-six dollars and ten. Court filing course, four thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars and forty-five cents. That's a total of four thousand two hundred twenty-three dollars, forty-five cents. Construction permit, eleven, which is a total of two thousand and seventeen dollars. MRNA, six, that's two thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. That's a total of two thousand five hundred fifty-six and fifty cents. Payments total, three hundred and forty-seven, which is a total of two hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-three cents. That's my report for the finance for this meeting. Thank you.
For the main, for the main night, two thousand nineteen meeting. Financial report, can I get a motion second to receive and file?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Chawaki.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Feliciano. Any question? Full vote.
Mr. Chuecky?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Earl?
Oh, yes. At this point now, we move forward with Councilman Cook. Public property.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Geth, and House Secretary. My report for the month of May, I'm unable to supply because I wasn't given the information that I had requested. So, I'm going to ask to present that information during our next meeting.
Okay, move forward. Now, we go forward with public safety. Councilwoman Torres?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, Council, Council President, and the public.
My report is as follows. For the month of April, two thousand nineteen, the number of total calls for services was three hundred and twenty-one. Parking summons was twenty-seven. Moving violations, sixty-six. Adult arrests, six. Juvenile arrests, one. DUI arrests, one. Borough ordinance, twenty-seven. The department towed one vehicle during the month. Uniform crime report, robbery, zero. Aggravated assault, two. Simple assault, three. Theft, eight. Burglary, four. Disorderly conduct, five. Driver offense, zero. Motive vehicle theft, zero. That's my report for the month of April, and it was submitted by Department Director of Public Safety, Edglen Figueroa.
You heard the report of public safety. Can I get a motion second to receive and file?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman, Council President Early, second by Councilman Fuentes. Any question? Full vote.
Mr. Chuecky?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Earl?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point now, emergency management, Councilman Ford.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, House Secretary, Council President, member of the council, President. This is emergency management report for April, nineteen nineteen. We have a total of seventy-two calls. Eleven of them is for fire calls, and sixty-one of them is for emergency management services. In comparison to previous month, in the month of March, with the comparing it with the month of April, we have seven additional calls from the fire department, and also we have seventeen additional calls from the EMS. Both are increased. From the month calls, in overall, we have twenty-four more calls this past April than the previous March, and we have seven calls more. Percentage wise, in comparison from March to April, we increased by fifty percent. I guess the summer is still around. The last activity in the summer, maybe that's why all this activity is coming up. Oh, this is the report for the April emergency management. Thank you.
You heard the report of emergency management. Can I get a motion second to receive and file?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Fuentes?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Feliciano. Any question? Full vote.
Mr. Chuecky?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Earl?
Oh, yes. At this point here, we move forward with public fair. Rob, Councilwoman Feliciano.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good afternoon, all council members, Council President, and the public. This is my report for the month of April. I'm happy to report that we had a very successful Easter egg hunt on Saturday, April thirteenth. All the kids were very much excited to come, and we had a very well-organized Easter egg hunt. And I also wanted to make sure that I thank everyone that was able to come out and participate, and thank everyone that offered any suggestions and for the event. So, that was a great, great event for us to attend. I also want to thank Council President Sharon Early. She came out as our Easter bunny. She did a great job. The kids enjoyed it. Our next event that we have coming up is for our annual Memorial Day service. It's going to be held Monday, May twenty-seventh, at ten a.m. If you're interested in placing a wreath, please make sure that you contact our clerk, and she can supply the extension at the end of the meeting if you don't know how to get in touch with her. And finally, I'd like to thank Councilman Fuentes for bringing to my attention that their, the county's hosting a bingo nut, a bingo, on Thursday, May sixteenth. He was able to bring the flyers for us today, so if you're interested in attending. It's going to be held in the Gloucester Township Senior Center, Thursday, May sixteenth, at eleven a.m. The doors open at ten forty-five. Lunch will be served at that event, and bingo will be starting approximately twelve p.m. All right? And this is my report for the month of April. Thank you.
You heard the report of public fair. Can I get a motion second to receive and file?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Chawaki, second by Council President Early. Any question? Full vote.
Mr. Chuecky?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Earl?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point now, we move over to the work. TBW, Council President Early.
Good evening, Mayor, I'm a clerk, members of council, members of the public. This is the public works report for the month of April. Week number one, we have eight thousand five hundred and forty pounds, or four point two seven tons. Week number two, eight thousand eight hundred and forty pounds, or four point four two tons. Week number three, ten thousand seven hundred pounds, or five point three five tons. Week number four, nine thousand one hundred pounds, or four point five five tons. Week number five, eight thousand eight hundred pounds, or four point four zero tons. So, total recycling was forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty pounds, or twenty-two point nine nine tons. For trash, week number one, forty-four thousand two hundred and sixty pounds, or twenty-two point thirteen tons. Week number two, forty-eight thousand one hundred and forty pounds, or twenty-four point seven tons. Week three, fifty-three thousand four hundred pounds, or twenty-six point seven zero tons. Week number four, fifty thousand twenty pounds, or twenty-five point one tons. Total trash was one hundred and ninety-five thousand eight hundred and twenty pounds, or ninety-seven point ninety-one tons. A yard waste, week number one, there were four yards. Week two, five. Week three, eight. Week number four, four. So, the total yard waste for April were twenty-one yards. That was respectfully submitted by Robert Kenny. That concludes the report of public works for April.
You heard the report of public work. Can I get a motion second to receive and file?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Chawaki, second by Councilwoman Fuentes. Any question? Full vote.
Mr. Chuecky?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Earl?
Yes.
Oh, yes. At this point here, now, we move over with ordinance twenty nineteen dash five, public hearing and adoption by title only. In order to exceed, to exceed the municipal budget, call across eleven allowance, and to establish a cap bank year twenty nineteen. Can I get a motion second?
No.
Motion by Council President Early, second by Councilwoman Chawaki. At this point, I open it up to the public now. Am I hearing it on? I close it?
No, I'm sorry. I'll go first. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Jeff Goodwin. I live at three fifteen Cypress Avenue. I have a few things I wanted to discuss today.
This is only on this ordinance?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead then. I apologize. My bad. I have nothing on that ordinance.
Okay. Anyone else? Am I hearing? I hope you can close it. At this point now, we go in full vote.
Mr. Chuecky?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Earl?
Yes.
We have five yes and one no. Motion passes. We now move forward with ordinance twenty nineteen dash six, public hearing and adoption by title only. In order to amend in chapter eighty-seven of the code of the borough Woodland, County of Kansas, State of New Jersey, and train parking handicap. Can I get a motion second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Feliciano, second by Councilman Cook. Any question? Full vote.
Mr. Chuecky?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yeah.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Earl?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-four, public hearing and adoption. Resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-four, resolution of the borough Woodland, County of Kansas, State of New Jersey, read by budget, by title, and adopted municipal two thousand nineteen, budget by title only. Can I get a motion second?
Motion.
Motion by Council President Early, second by Councilwoman Chawaki. At this point, I open it up to the public. Hearing none, closing. Move forward now with full vote.
Mr. Chuecky?
The budget. The budget. What'd you say? Any question? Anybody? What do you got there? Oh, okay. This is twenty nineteen eight, just about to move the eight. I think the question. Any other question? Full vote.
Mr. Chuecky?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
No.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Earl?
Yes.
Five yes and one no. Motion pass. Resolution twenty nineteen dash forty-five, resolution of the borough Woodland, County of Kansas, State of New Jersey, authorizing Joel Cargallo use of the baseball field for the softball game. Can I get a motion second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Chawaki, second by Councilwoman Feliciano. Any question?
Yes. My question is, the use of the ball field by Joseph Carbella. Is this someone that is a Woodland resident? Is that here in Woodland?
This is a church, it's an open field. This is a church organization, softball league. They've been using the field for many years. They provide their own insurance, so they had asked if they can use the field, knowing that if there's a Woodland activity, they do not use the field.
Do we have a copy of that insurance?
Yes.
And are we able to obtain that as far as council?
Sure.
A copy?
Sure.
Is there feet that we're charging as well?
No. It's an open public field. Anybody can use the field. The only thing with that is that we just try to schedule this so you don't have a two or three people, or teams coming in and trying to use the field. This is why we do this.
So, for that time stamp, so my question also is going to be, with that time stamp being the way that it is, it prevent, would it prevent us from renting it out to other people that might be interested?
We don't rent it out.
Well, not renting out for anybody else that wants to do a few lots of fields when I'm at time.
We did it with the Jason, with the five K run, you know? Any other question? Full vote.
Mr. Chuecky?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yeah.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
I'm going to, I'm staying from there.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Earl?
Oh, yes. One of staying, approaching carries. At this point, we got a motion to approve the bills, the prepaid bills. Can I get a motion second?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Chawaki, second by Council President Early. Question? Full vote.
Mr. Chuecky?
Yes.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yes.
Ms. Torres?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Feliciano?
Yes.
President Earl?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Any other new business? I'll go. We had the pre-construction meeting today. There were two of them. One for the continuing of phase two for the third street avenue, and we had a one for the replacement of the sewer on Cooper Avenue. They are to start at the end of this month. So, at this point here, we will be having construction going on at the end of the month. Notice will be going out to residents, and detour signs will be put out there as where they need to be. We met with Council Water Department, our color work supervisor. We met with CDGB, and we met with our engineer contractor and the police department. So, door hanging will go to those that are affected on the area when they're going to start setting up for construction. As I stated, they will set detours as needed toward a direction to direct traffic while construction is going on. Also, I know last week, I had asked Mr. Cook to see how many tables. Rob said that you needed it, round tables. You don't need any long tables?
Uh, long tables, I'll request.
Three, six foot or the eight foot?
I'm going to say two, two six foot and one eight foot.
And one eight foot?
Yes, sir.
How many rounds? Six, he said?
Yes.
And twenty or thirty chairs, it was?
Thirty chairs.
Six. So, you and Rob went in today, were looking and sanding up. Now, he knows what to remove out of there?
Yes. I have a discussion on what to remove.
Everything's departed according to how you and Rob set it up. I want to make sure it's set up the right way.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And he knows how to, where to put these stages, these six tables and those, and the two long ones?
He'll give me a ball and I'll, uh, they're right.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, sir. I did receive the proposal from St. James Grace Ministries. I'm giving your copy now. Submit a copy as far as the decision to St. James Grace made to every member of council. The public gets welcome to the copy as well. They gave their decision, and based on their decision, it was, the letter reads as follows, to whom it makes concern, it was brought, it brought in great sadness that our proposal for Woodland Community Center was rejected by the City of Woodland. My team and I were asked to get criminal backgrounds done, which we get annually for our certification. We were told that we needed to have them done by Woodland Police Department on several occasions. Myself, Nadia Isolent and Pastor Cook tried with failed attempts. It was a great joy to be notified by our CEO that the mayor and the municipal lawyer are now willing and able to provide recommendate, recommended background checks. Our proposal partnership due to delay has now changed. We extend an open opportunity to be servant, to be of service at the Isabel Miller Community Center, Hamline, New Jersey, Monday, three sixty-five days opportunity for change, for change boys mentoring. Thursday, Trauma Hillen, CoEd Youth and Family, Youth and Friday, Family Youth Night, all five to nine p.m. Saturday, Safe Group Therapy, one through six p.m. We, as a board, made a unified decision to accommodate your community, and we will only be able to commit to Tuesdays at this time, onsite in Woodland, if you still desire our service. Thank you, Your Schoolie, Kira Davis, Administrative Director.
I just want to say, we never rejected it for the record. Was that, it was, Miss, she came in here last month meeting. We told her we needed something to go by. She said she was going to provide it for us. This is the first that we've gotten this. So, we have not yet received the name of the individual that Mr. McKenna and myself are willing to tribute our donation to get these background done. So, at this point here, we'll refer them onto this package and try to reach out to them and see what we can do. I appreciate that, Mayor.
I'm also suggesting that yourself, member of council, as well as those who are attending the meeting, as well as those in the community, that we can actually come together. At the end, the summer is approaching. These kids need to have an avenue and an outlet, you know? Putting everything aside, our differences, at the end, you know, we have to look at our children and bring an opportunity to the table so that they can have a safe haven and a place to go to while school is out and while the church is not offering current programs, you know, for the summer, for the children.
As I stated at the last meeting, I don't think, and I've made it very clear, I don't think that anybody's against this, is that we never had any proposal. This is the first that's coming to us, okay? So, it's not to say that this is, we're not accepting anybody, we're not in his interest. It's just that we haven't received anything. So, we're all in favor of working with our children, giving our children something to do, to providing something. We have no problem with that, especially when somebody's going to volunteer the service. That is great. But again, there is a protocol and a procedure that we need to take and follow. So, again, this is the first that this has come. We still need a name so we can do the background and move forward so we can get this event and this program to go.
I would also like us to look into the possibility, because like I said, we want to extend to residents the opportunity to also come in to help assist. You know, it takes the village to raise children, and at the end of the day, I would like to see everybody come in. And I know that the background check is costly to some people that can't afford it. I would like to see if we could work towards being able to come up with either a wager or some way to cushion the fee, because this fee will prevent a lot of people and discourage them from wanting to be a part of this. And I don't want, or want them to fill that, you know, we want to shun them away, but actually embrace them to help our kids.
Bring who is interested and let's see what they can offer, and we can go from there.
So, at this point, I guess it's just put together a letter. I'm asking my committee to work with me, as well as council, put together letters so that we could issue out to residents other than just, you know, our regular monthly or bi-monthly bulletin, asking for residents to, you know, say if they want to talk to their citizens and meet up with us as soon as possible.
So, we'll look at it, and that's not a problem. Politically, say, I think Miss Nigeria has said that she has ten members, because that's what we're looking to pay for the ten members. Let's see how that goes and what we can do.
Great.
At this point here, anybody?
Mr. Cook, this is a question for you. I know you recently saw my school board. Have you reached out to the school board people in regard to the after-school program since the facility is already existing there? And besides, we all pay tax to the school.
Understandable. I will reach out if I happen to have an opportunity, you know, attend meetings and stuff and companion to my own personal business and my family. I haven't had that experience, and I will ask that question during the next school board meeting.
Anybody else here?
Does anybody know the, when is the school next school board meeting?
Our school board meetings held the second Tuesday, seven thirty of each month.
Thank you.
Anything else?
We had a de collaboration on the water. The department wasted. Apparently, college would say anything to you about that.
It could be when, they were flushing the hydrants. It could be by flushing the hydrant. They were out there flushing the hydrants. Anything else? Okay, at this point, I open it up to the public. Please state your names and your addresses.
My next question is, two twenty twenty at the end. My first question is, what's going on with the radar? He was told it won't be fixed.
With the what? I'm sorry?
The speed radar that was on Woodland Avenue.
That's not a radar. That's a speed sign. But that is, that is, that has been replaced, replaced. We do have one. They just sent it in. What we're going to do is put it on a trailer so we can put it on different location. That should be coming out, but fairly soon.
My next question is, what happened to the documentation that Clyde requested contained some rock showing that he signed off on it? He never got it, so what's going on with that? Because I would like to see.
Are you representing, are you representing, Mr. Cook? Because obviously-
I'm representing myself.
He can, he can ask for those.
But I'm asking for myself because I'm resident, so I would like to see it too. So, what's going on with it?
Well, when Mr. Cook gets them, he can show them to you.
Well, when will he get it? Do I need to put in an open request for that?
You can do what you want to do.
But you're not answering a question?
I just told you, you'll get it when Mr. Cook receives it. I think Mr. Cook had to ask for it. He should get it first before I give it to you.
Okay, I'll put in an open request. I would like to.
Not a problem.
And my last question is, are you head of the Democratic Club or Committee?
Am I the head of the Democrat Committee?
Yeah.
I'm a member of the Democrat Party.
Well, I feel like when you put my name in- Well, I feel like when you put my name in black and white, make sure that you put in facts. Because if I see my name in black and white and you giving it out to residents and it's not correct, I'm gonna put you in court.
Well, you do what you have to do.
And to remind you, I'm a Democrat. I've been a Democrat for the last twenty years. I'm not a Republican.
I'm not gonna play this as a political game or you-
I'm, I'm not. I'm, I'm just saying.
And I'm just saying.
Cause you put my name on the paper and you pass it out to the residents and the roulette.
Anything else?
Yeah. Are you carrying all your taxes?
Yes.
No, you're not. Cause I fooled you in public records. You're behind on two houses.
No, I'm not.
So, pay the taxes before you try to slander somebody else.
I'll continue. Next.
Hi, yeah, Jeff Goodwin, three fifteen Cypress. I appreciate the time. I have a few things I just wanted to touch base on. Um, one, you mentioned that the second phase of, uh, the paving out on the third street. Uh, what's the limits of that? Like, where's that gonna go?
All the way to Laurel.
Okay, but it's not gonna go back on areas that have already been recently done?
It's going all on Third Street. It's gonna go from the end of where they stopped at, I wanna say either Elm or Evergreen, all the way to, to Laurel.
Is it the same? Is it the same contractor going to do the work?
No, they went off a bit. It's a different contractor that was awarded the job.
Did the contractor, did the work get paid?
What?
The work has been completed. Has that been paid?
They, they received a portion, first half, and then I received the second half.
Okay, and was-
And then there's a retain also.
Okay, good. Was there a, a design done specifically for it or was it just kinda matching what was already there?
This was what the engineer had put together.
Okay, so he went out and actually did a field survey and did a design. I, I'm only raising that because-
No problem.
Um, I don't know if you've been out there, but on Third and Elm, if you face east, this is actually an old photo and you can have this, but, but the same condition exists. Um, that's prior to the paving. If you go out there now, um, that still holds water in that gutter line. And the issue, there's just no slope in that gutter line. So, the conditions that are on that paving, my guess is two years are gonna repeat themselves if we don't clean that up and have hold, either it's either the engineer didn't do a good design or the contractor didn't, uh, do a good installation or a combination of both. But I just, I'm bringing that to your attention to hopefully you can look into that.
I, I did take a notice of that. Again, this, they're not at the final stage. They still have to do the final rapid before anything goes on. Then we have a year to see if there's any been any problem with that and we can go on the retainage.
Right, okay. So, so, uh, you're saying when, before they get paid the other half of the money, there's additional work in that first phase that needs to happen?
Just the final touch points that they need to do, yes.
Okay, cause that wouldn't-
The inspector has to go-
They usually have to do punch lists if they have any.
Yeah, okay, so, so the engineer inspector has not done that punch list yet and won't, so you won't release the second half of the money less the retainage until you have that sign off from the engineer.
The retainage sits there for a year.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying the second part of the money. Cause the retainage is usually ten percent, which is, if it's a serious issue, it isn't gonna cover, uh-
Well, if, if you have to cut that right there and then just mill on that to pivot them, we'll sit down and see how that's gonna go.
Yeah, okay. I appreciate your time on that. Um, about two years, little over two years ago, there was a fire on a house, I'm not sure it's one oh four or one oh six Chestnut Street. And, uh, it's been sitting in, uh, what I think is an unsafe condition for about two years, plus two years plus. What's the game plan to rectify that?
The situation is, the building inspector reviewed that and looked at it. We sent a notice to the owners that they need to either dump, demolish it or rehab it. Um, at this point here, they sent us a notice that they were under, um, investigation and why it was being investigated, it put everything on hold back. Right now, the, um, De Munoz, who is the construction official, sent out the second notice that if they do not act on it, then legal action will be taken. And then we will have to look at to take the property down and put a lien on it.
So, you're not suggesting that the borough would demolish the building? Cause the, the building is, I-
We'd like to see if he can pay for it and hold him accountable for it.
Well, again, it's been over two years.
And again, it's been in the court matter because it was being investigated for arson.
Okay, but sometime in two years, I would think, and, and I have photos-
I know what the property looks like. I attended that fire. I know what that looks like.
Okay, well, it's, I'm sure changed a little bit over time, maybe not the whole council.
I was there, I was, I was there yesterday.
Okay, well, might, maybe not everybody was there.
As the construction official and the building inspector looked at-
Sure. Yeah, sure. Anyway, so if you were there yesterday, I'm sure you also then noticed that there was no, no trespassing signs, no, you know, uh, any degree of safety taken into account about no fencing, no, uh, danger zone, no, nothing. And there's a lot of kids here and, uh, you know, sometimes kids don't always use all the brain cells. And, uh, you can see there's stairs literally dangling in the air. It's been two years of subject to elements, critters, whatever is in there. And at any time, that building can come down. And personally, I think if the, if minimally, there should be some sort of protection and notice there, hey, don't go in here. And, and if the construction code official is aware of it, and I'm sure every, you know, as you said, every, you're aware of and everybody else is aware of it, I think at, at some level, the borough has some liability if we don't at least secure it, if not take it down. So, I guess I'm asking, are, is, I don't know if he's in charge of public works here or whatever, but-
Public works would, would care that it happens.
That goes with the construction official.
Okay, so, will you-
They're on, they're on it.
Well, you say they're on it, but like I said, there's no signs, there's no fencing, there's no protection there. And it's been that way for two plus years.
I'll talk to this, well, let me-
How on it are they?
They, they were some protection around it. It's gone. So, I'm gonna say to you that I'll talk to the, I already talked to Ron, who's the building, uh, subco building, okay, to, so we can do the proper notification and move on with that.
Okay, so, just to circle back on it though, you, you will reach out to them to ask them to put up minimally signs and ideally at least some sort of fencing so that, you know, if, if somebody does got, if they get hurt, at least there was some semblance of a, uh, protection for Woodland.
Okay, point taken. Thank you.
So, the other thing I'd like to pass out to the council is, I want, would you be willing to pass this around for me?
Please.
Oh, thank you. I'll explain it in a second. Can I put this up here, drive for you? This is a list taken from the, uh, state of New Jersey Treasury website listing five hundred and sixty-seven municipalities in the state of New Jersey. And they have the effective tax rate, which I sorted, uh, for ease, of every municipality. Out of the five hundred and sixty-seven, Woodland ranks number five hundred and sixty-six. So, five hundred and sixty-five municipalities have a lower and much lower tax rate than Woodland. I also want to just point out that Winfield, who has the highest tax rate, is actually not exactly a town. It's, uh, it's more of one community is owned by one entity, uh, that was formed after World War Two, uh, for affordable housing up by New York. Uh, so, so there are no taxpayers in that. So, effectively, out of the five hundred and sixty-six municipalities, Woodland has the worst, the highest tax rate out of everyone. And my question is, what plans are in place? What ideas exist from this body to fix that?
Okay, well, as you're aware, obviously you've done some homework here. So, you're aware of your tax freeways in this town. We only control your local taxes. We don't control your school taxes and we don't control your county taxes, okay? What we have done last year was a zero tax increase. This year, we did, we introduced already and approved a zero tax increase. Now, when I became mayor, school taxes were about twenty-nine thousand dollars a month. We now pay to the school taxes a hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars a month, which we have no control in.
Okay, I, uh, I'm not surprised with that answer. I was referring to tax rate. You're talking about raw taxes. And I understand what you're saying. Tax rate is a function of value versus your taxes. And so, my question again gets back to not about taxes. How do, what ideas exist in this body to improve the property values, not the, the, the tax burden, but improve the tax rate?
Well, you know what? Obviously, we can sit here for a longer period of time. I welcome-
I would like one idea, Mayor.
Well, I would like, well, one of the thing is to work with, trying to get businesses to work with businesses.
And how do you do that?
You say one idea, I give you idea. And I'm not gonna-
No, that's not an idea. That's-
Let me explain something to you. I'd be more than glad to sit down with you. You're welcome to come to my office.
This is a public meeting. I-
Well, I understand that. But I'm not gonna tie this whole thing up. There's all the people that might wanna speak. If you'd like to sit down, I'll be more than glad to sit down with you.
I'm, I'm sorry, that's unacceptable answer.
Okay, all right, next.
Uh, well, hold on. I have one more thing I wanna point out. One more handout for I know it's, let me pass it around. There you go. Well, I, I think it's important for everybody to see that. So, the mayor points out, um, that it's the schools that are driving the tax rate. What I've just handed out is in Camden County, and this is taken from the New Jersey Department of Education website, Taxpayers' Guide to Education Spending. And what this shows is out of the thirty-two, um, school districts in Camden County, Woodland has the sixth lowest cost per student to educate. So, if you look at this, you're blaming the schools for taxes.
I'm not blaming.
Oh, Mr. Ma, uh, uh, hold on.
Let's get something straight. I-
You didn't, you didn't say this was the schools?
I just gave you the fact. I'm not blaming. Let's get that straight.
Okay. Well, 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 again, it gets back to, in terms of your facts, your facts don't jive with these, I guess, alternate facts. That the school, what, what we spend in, in schools per student is significant, it's significantly less than the average in Camden County than the other districts.
You can take that up with the school and see-
It's not that I'm taking up, the point is, our tax rates are-
Just excuse me, the gentleman speaking.
Our, our tax rates are through the roof. It's not the school's fault.
Nobody says it's the school's fault. I never claimed to say it's the school's fault. I'm giving you the fact that when your tax rate is at this point level and what your course is going from, okay? We can go and discuss this and see either eye to eye or not see eye to eye. You have your own opinion and I have my opinion.
I have facts.
And I understand that. But understanding what I just told you, okay? We have done what we can do. And I'd be more than glad to sit down with you, okay? So, like I said, I'm not gonna sit here and tie up the whole day on, on an issue here. So, we can say, Mr. Jeffrey, you have been in this town for quite a while, okay?
I know, and I've seen my value drop every single year of my house.
I don't know why you have never approached to come here to discuss this matter.
I have, I was here about two years ago.
Two years ago, yes.
I, you know-
Two years ago.
People here-
My office is here. You can have been here at any time. Let's not use this as a political game.
It's not a political game. These are the facts.
I agree.
You're rough a committee man.
What does that have to do with the facts?
You're the one that are now coming here playing your game by putting this-
Mayor, you're, you're playing politics. I'm here looking for answers and you're pushing me off.
He hasn't been at the last couple of years.
It's a public meeting.
And I'm not gonna take this time right now.
Let me ask you another question. In the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
But we get that every week. I mean, every time I go there, every minute, the resident asks the question.
Excuse me, excuse me. Your turn will come when you have your turn, okay?
When, when was the last time your house was appraised?
Appraised or assessed?
Assessed.
Uh, probably twenty years ago.
Twenty years?
I don't know. How, when was the last time a township had a township-wide assessment?
It wasn't twenty years ago.
Well, when was it? I don't know the answer to that.
We got, uh, within probably eight years. Don't get me quoted on that, okay? About eight years.
Eight years or two years ago?
It wasn't two years ago.
No, it wasn't. About eight years.
It was at least, yeah.
At least eight, ten, maybe like that.
Was it increased or decreased?
I have no idea, but I can assure you, it's decreased since it was done eight years ago.
I know, I'm just asking, when you received the letter from county or from the city telling you that your house is appraised to this value, was it increased or decreased at the time you saw the letter?
I, I have no idea, but what's, well, I guess what's your?
Well, you get it every year. You have an assessment every year.
No.
The assessment hasn't changed.
Not the assessment. You get a car assessment mailed to you every year.
Yeah.
Okay.
That hasn't changed. But eight, your eyes go back eight years ago. I have no idea what happened eight years ago.
Well, I'm, I'm telling you, I got a letter last year that my property is increased in value.
You should sell it then.
Let me finish. Most people, when they see that value, most homeowners, they'd be happy that their house is valued. But what they don't understand is that is your time to go and put an objection and try to ask the county that assess your building, look, the house next door cannot sell what you say my house is valued.
Oh, yeah, yeah. We have tax appeal as, as an option and, and I know a lot of people have-
Let me finish.
I'm sorry.
Please. If you don't do that, they will tax and raise your tax up based on that. But if you put an objection, you will go and talk to the assessor and show him the reason why you shouldn't raise the value of your house because of the condition of what is within and around your property. And if you see eye to eye with your discussion and with every evidence you have, it will not increase your tax because it will let the house stay on the same level that it was before. So, what am I saying is when an owner of a building who bought the house, say, twenty thousand, in the next five years, see a tax assessor say, hey, your house is valued this, I'd be happy because I might say I get that money and that is what really grabbed us. And we do not react to it. Most of the homeowners, including myself, until I realize what this is all about.
Yeah, no, I, I hear what you're saying. And, and you're, you're not exactly addressing my point. My, my point is-
No, the other question I might have for you-
Yes, sir.
Since you have all this point, what are your suggestions?
I have, I'm glad you asked and I'll get there in a second. Uh, but, but my, my overall point is, about five years ago, I could have sold my house for approximately a hundred thousand dollars. Today, I'd be lucky to get fifty thousand dollars. So, on top of paying taxes every year, I'm basically putting an extra ten thousand dollars out of my retirement, say, that goes away.
You know you can give more than fifty thousand dollars for your house.
The person who lived next door to me tried every way up and down for two years and ended up selling it for thirty thousand dollars. Now, some of that was the-
But you see that condition of the house?
Well, it wasn't that when, when she started and she couldn't sell it for fifty.
So, I'll tell you right now, that-
I live next door. Is it what they kid-
You have not been inside.
Well, I, I'm probably, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't go wrong in my neighbor's houses, so I can't swear to what it looked like, but I can just tell you.
All right.
But my, the overall, the overall-
I'll be more than glad to sit down and discuss anything.
But the overall, the overall point is that the values have dropped and, and that's because of the condition. Now, now, Mr. Churecki asked me a question, which I would like to respond to. What are some of the ideas? There's, there are ideas that exist, okay? One of the ideas, which, uh, could be, the whole town is, the whole borough is reassessed and bring our values down. In theory, at least within the township, it should be a wash. But we're overpaying the county probably a million dollars a year because we're overassessed based, based on-
We don't pay over a million dollars to the county.
Well, what, what do we pay to the county?
Pay almost close to a half a million dollars.
Okay, then we, then we overpay the county two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in, in taxes because we're being assessed at a much higher-
Why don't you reach out to Mr. Danga, your tax assessor, who's here at four, four, four fifty to five fifty, okay, P M. On Tuesdays. You're more than glad that you can sit down. I'll be more than glad to sit down and we can see what is going on, what your taxes are, how your property is assessed, and we can go from there.
Yeah, I, I'm not talking about my specific house.
What are you talking about?
I'm talking about the town in general.
You don't know that number for fact.
Oh, I don't. I just-
You're just going by speculation, what you're saying.
I, I'm, I'm going by what I see sold in the townships all the time here.
But just cause what you see sold doesn't mean it's the value.
Well, show me houses that are sold for higher.
Because I'll tell you right now, there are, there have been properties that, you know, fortunately a senior either passed away or moved on and their kids are just selling it for whatever they can get out of it. Not because it's on the value, it's just what they wanna sell it for.
Well, there's a lot of people it's, it's happened to over the last couple of years. But, uh, again, to, to address what Mr. Churecki asked, some, other ideas, what, one of the problems that we have here, there's a vacant lot on the corner of, of, uh, Third and Cypress. And the grass got cut today and I appreciate that. And, and problem- And problem in this borough, when you get right down to it, is, you know, if somebody were to buy that, or buy the house, say, on, that needs to be torn down over on Chestnut, it's not economically feasible and it's because of the high tax rate. So if somebody comes in, and let's use the one on Chestnut, somebody has to spend thirty thousand dollars to demolish it. Assuming the land's for free, thirty thousand dollars to demolish the house. Well, then you got to build something there. What are you going to build? Well, you got to spend a hundred fifty thousand dollars building something. So now you're in a hundred eighty thousand dollars.
We don't have to build anything.
No, no, no.
We're going to develop on it.
Well, the idea is that you could create economic incentives for people who want to develop it.
I understand it.
Well, let me finish my...
You're saying now we're in the hole for a hundred eighty, which we're in now.
I'm not saying us. I'm just saying, I'm not saying about, I'm saying if you want to create economic incentive, then somebody would have to spend a hundred eighty thousand dollars to be able to sell a house on this land. What's the taxes of a hundred eighty thousand dollar house in Woodland? You're going to spend fourteen thousand dollars. Nobody's going to do it.
If they want to spend a hundred eighty, some can spend a hundred. All the time, that's what they do. They go with a free fat.
But, Mr. Mayor...
But you know, but you're taking a number from a hundred eighty, you want to tax it on a hundred eighty. Let's be realistic.
Well, if that's what it sells for, isn't that what the value is?
Let's go back a little bit because that's what your numbers are. You're putting a hundred eighty. You're putting that price.
Well, explain to me why I'm wrong in the math. Are you trying to tell me you can build a house for less, from scratch, for less than a hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Absolutely.
Well, you should come work for my company then because I do home building and you ain't building that.
Let me tell you something.
Well, what do you, what do you say to the house?
You can put in a prefab home in there, which we'd like you for to go in. And you know that. And you know that.
Well, well...
Here we go again.
No, no. First of all, I don't know that.
I'm not going to continue talking.
No, 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 no.
No, I'm not. Let's go.
No, I have a couple other points. Mr. Churecki asked, and I'd like to continue the answer.
Next, Jeff.
Okay, so what I was getting to with that point is, the borough needs to create economic incentives for people to come in here. How do you do that? Well, one, you look at what your master plan is. You get a planner to designate portions of, or all the borough as redevelopment or rehabilitation areas. And then you can, you can create and give tax incentives to people who want to come in and improve Woodland Avenue. But nobody up here has that kind of vision.
You can't say that because...
Well, you've had years to do it. Well, tell me where that's happening.
You are wrong.
Okay, well, tell me where that's happening right now.
You are wrong.
Okay, tell me. I'm here.
Excuse me.
I'm here. Just tell me where I'm wrong.
One more. I'm going to have her removed from here. Now, let me explain something to you. We are ready to declare Woodland Avenue as a new redevelopment. We did money for Woodland Avenue as a declaration of redevelopment, okay? So now moving forward that, okay, we had a proposal to try to build a senior citizen home in forty units, okay? Unfortunately, now the state had changed their plans. Now, the property was on the one, on the three hundred block of Cooper Avenue. We were looking to build forty seniors. We had to develop it. But because the state no longer funds anything that's in the flood zone, that plan is going now, okay? On Woodland Avenue, you're trying to bring in some business and trying to draft some businesses. Right now, one of the things that we have to do is try to get this market booming and established. We're trying to work with people to give them the incentive, okay? So you can't say we're not doing this. Because if you haven't come to this, to these meetings to require this, waited two years, and if you haven't come to my office to discuss matters like this, Mr. Jeff, let me explain something to you, okay? I would wish that you would come before you speak and come over and get the facts, okay?
So if I come tomorrow, I can get a copy of a redevelopment plan and a redevelopment, or is, when was that passed?
We did a redevelopment plan. It was back, I'm not going to estimate, but you can come over Monday and I'll be more than glad to show you the redevelopment.
I mean, this year, last year, five years ago?
About five.
Okay, so what was done, obviously, isn't working if it's been five years.
It's just you just can't get investors. Woodland is mostly residential. Where are you going to build that?
Well...
You know, I'm not going to continue.
No, no, no. I think it's a bad conversation.
You're fishing, and I want to continue.
No, I'm not fishing.
We can have a meeting and the conversation a lot of time. Anything else?
Well, let me just summarize that in terms of, we have the highest tax rate in the state of New Jersey. We have schools that are actually decent and I don't want to say are perfect because I don't know exactly what the budget is. So I'm just basing on what's...
That's what you need to check.
Yeah, I could be.
It's for you to get any family in this, in this city. The school is the driving factor. Do you know that? A school has to be a perfect school for a family to bring their kid to go to that school.
All I can say is...
We have a fall in school until we started bringing it up. Do you know how many property they had about eight years ago? There's only one property on M Avenue. I'm sorry, on, yeah, that's M Avenue. Do you know when they built the next property behind that? And what category of increase in school or scholarship that they used that made them to build all that big building? Do you know that they used the borrowed account that put us on hold not to do anything until they paid the money borrowing it? You need to get your statistics.
Hold on. You're saying that schools need to be better and when they're trying to be better, you're, you're...
That will help you a little bit.
You're going against that concept.
That's what I'm going to, what's your next question?
And so again, I just... I just want to summarize and just say, we have the highest tax rates in the state of New Jersey. We have schools that, at least on Zillow, Zillow rates the different schools and they take that off again, published information, that our schools are average. I'm not saying we're Hatton Field by any stretch of the imagination, but they have our schools as being average. And average is not, you know, not a bad thing. And with the, with the low cost per pupil that we realize, we need to figure out how we improve the property values and not, when somebody questions the taxes, you know, go into... The issue here is the values, it's the community, and how do we do that? We have to create economic incentives.
Values are going up because houses are selling in Woodland. Thank you. Next.
Uh, Mayor, I do want to ask a question. Does the assessor notify residents when he's doing an assessment of their property?
Absolutely.
And does he does the assessment inside and outside?
Does it outside assessment?
They will do outside.
You don't want a full assessment, I believe, to tell you right now.
Well, the reason I question that, and it's not a personal attack or anything, there was a resident that, you know, I had an opportunity to speak with, and the resident had stated, you know, that they were disturbed about their taxes being high and the assessment. He questioned that the assessor stated that he had an air conditioning unit, which was central air in his house, and he doesn't have central air. This is a resident that lives on Cypress Avenue. So the thing is, is he says, how could they assess my house with having central air? Which brings up the value, you know, of my taxes. And at the end, he felt that he didn't have his property assessed right. Now, he did appear. He did appeal the decision, which was the correct thing to do. And I think many residents at this point have taken that opportunity as well. I mean, if they've asked me about, I've told them, if you don't agree with it, there's a time to appeal your...
I always tell them that when somebody discusses, when somebody comes in to discuss about the taxes, I say, you can speak to the tax assessor and you can do an appeal.
And we voted here last year, I believe, two times, to pay back money that was collected from a tax to a resident who had appealed their tax and got a reduction. So if you think that your taxes have, you had the opportunity, come downstairs and see the person who actually assessed it, and they will see it on your own side and try to do things that would reduce your tax there. But hey, we're going the wrong way for it. We finished all this thing and just washed out. But you had the opportunity to meet one on one with them downstairs and then talk about your own particular issue.
I'm worried about the whole community not just...
You know what? I would love to see you anytime and I'd love to see you all month to month, basically, come to the meetings. And not every two years. Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
Kelly, Newhouse, key one twenty-two, Maple Avenue. I just have a question on the Woodland Avenue up by our house at Maple, the traffic. The, I was there waiting and I had a little girl and her mother cross the street and there was a car behind me stopped and then a third car come flying around us. I almost wiped the Ford eighty out in front of me. And it's, you can't even cross there. They run you the hell over.
On Maple Avenue?
On Maple. And there's a crosswalk there. They used to have the sign, but I guess it got ran over too many times, so they don't have it no more. But it seems like there's been three or four accidents right there at Patton Street and they're just flying up and down Ferry Avenue and Woodland Avenue. That's why I was wondering where that sign was to try and slow down. I mean, I see the cops sitting here, but they, can they do that where they make the guy walk across the street like they do in Collinsburg in Camden? And if you don't stop, the cops up ahead and gives you a ticket or something like something to...
After the meeting, you can speak to Mr. Dango.
You know, slow them down a little bit. And the other thing I have is, for our recyclable or trash or whatever, like the lady threw a mop out and they don't pick it up. What do we do with it? Like, is...
What do you mean, the lady threw...
She threw a mop in a plastic bin and a coffee maker, so, and they don't pick it up. And then it sits out in the street. Can you just give us a flyer of what they take?
They should pick up the mop. I don't know what happened.
No, they didn't take the mop. So I took everything and dumped it in Camden and then dumped it.
Well, let me tell you something. All you have to do is, we've always said, all you have to do is just make a phone call to the office.
Well, they said they were going to make up a flyer, the trash man, and tell us what, because they're not taking things again? Because they said they don't take them no more.
We talked about recycling for the electronic. That's what we talked about.
Well, they said the trash man told us that they changed, so they're not about to take anything.
The trash is the trash. We talked about the flyers that go off electronic.
Well, what puts the plastic bins, like what do they do with them?
What plastic bins?
The bins that you buy, puts things in, storage bins, the plastic ones with the lids.
They could be, they could be trash.
But when we put them in the trash, they put them back on the curb.
Well, they're probably, they're probably...
They probably think you're using them to put the stuff out.
No, they actually wrote trash on it.
I've written a big note, please take me with trash.
So I take everything and dump it in the dumpster.
All you have to do is just call the borough and Rob will be more than glad to come around and pick it up.
Well, that's what all the neighbors are asking. That's why I'm here. Can they make up a flyer and just tell us what the...
Trash is trash. We only talked about the difference is going to be on electronic. We did put out a flyer in the newsletter, went out there explaining what your trash, what's going out, okay? What's in the last newsletter, what's your trash on? And when trash stays there, okay?
All right. Well, I was just curious, Mr. Mayor.
Because sometime a container bin thing, regardless you put trash, I might write here trash, okay? And they might say, oh, that's their trash can. That's your trash bucket.
No, they put plastic, they don't even put trash in it. They just stick it on top of their can.
Now, just call, I always say, just call the office and we'll have Rob, and he'll be more than curious to come pick it up, okay?
Well, I'll pick it up.
So we did give the regulations this morning, because I know we had the discussion during our meeting.
No, not yet. The recycling stuff or the electronic is not going out. We put out what needs to go off of trash and recycle.
And as far as the signage, I understand where we are as far as the state would be one sign. But as far as what she's talking about, as far as the areas, as far as Maple, people are always complaining about the areas as far as Mark Avenue. And then of course further down, like where I am, which is London, there is, we do have the sign out there to, you know, tell people that they have to stop and stuff like that because of the kids crossing from schools. What is the chances, do you think it's better for us to put two additional signs so that it will be visible to what people...
They ran a sign through.
Well, we can have color work go over and replace it. Any, anything else? Hold on. Anything else before you're wasting the whole tape?
Can you tell me which quarter?
No? All right. We're adjourned. Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All in favor?
Maple. Maplewood, Woodland.
Milwaukee.
Woodward Cars, like by the barber shop.
Thank you. Happy Mother's Day to everyone, others.
Or Woodford.